I don't want to get into that. And that's the way the office and the developer through the solicitor keep us posted. Because I'm going to be asking the question, I don't care if a lot of people aren't here because I'm looking by. You know, a lot of people don't come to all of meetings. But I want to know, but how much escrow is in these developments? You know, one there is in bad shape. And we're going to be end up paying that. Thank you.
And I know that we do have the Westchester Road, South Cow Road on the financial statement. So we do know the money in there, but you know, that's something we can look into for this one and future developments as far as keeping track of the escrow where we can.
And past developments that we have.
And just to clarify, the financial security that's being put up for the development doesn't get released until there's official board action to release any of that money?
Well, I can tell you, Solicitor, there was money released prior, all right? And that's left in the hole before you got on there, all right?
What is the, what type of escrow are they posting?
They're posting a construction loan escrow with WSFS.
So like, is it more like a bond or?
Yeah, they're here, they can speak to the financials directly, but they've got certification from the bank that the money is placed and ready and available to the township. The bank is actually going to be a signatory to that financial security agreement. It's not like it's just us and the developer, it's us and the developer and the financials.
Want to say anything?
Just to clarify that, Mr. Porter, John Pender's here with Ross Chamberlain. The difference between the bond, you had asked about the bond, is in this particular case, should there be a default on the part of the developer, the bank is promising to write a check to cover those costs directly to the township as opposed to when a bond situation where you would have to look to them as insurance company to undertake the loan. So this is, this is in essence as good as having a catchester.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Just, what? She's saying, it's, all you're doing is just...
So the board's already approved the development. This is not a vote to approve or disprove the development, if you like it or don't like it. Once it's developed, once a development is approved, there's kind of a checklist of things you need to put together, prepare, finalize, which these are, in order for the plans to be released and for the township to be protected. And that's what this is approving.
All right. In response, Mr. Rude, I understand what you're saying. This, this particular property is a huge concern because it's like the last development that, I guess, on the county regional plan for high density for East File Field is the last one. There's another one to go in, but it's a little too late on a lot here for East File Field and the other side. I live across from this piece of property, so I'm well aware of what's to come as far as higher density. But I would be an aye just to, it's not me approving it, it's just continuing the process here. Okay, you change yours, yeah, okay. So that motion passes four zero. And the second motion for this, I move that, I motion that the township authorize a release of the Rich Crass Phase One plans for recording with the Chester County Reporter of Deeds Office, subject to the applicant's ongoing obligation to submit the $1,500 Park and Recreation Fund contributions at the time of building permit submission for each lot. Do you want a second?
Second.
Question or comments on this?
Mike, is there anything that we can do with the, this township is like, has a crazy accounting problem with our Park and Rec Fund money from the past. I remember the supervisor, that was a forensic CPA, was having trouble determining where this money goes. When I came on this board, no one in the township administration except someone in Park and Rec could even give me a flow chart of where this fee on the money has gone. Is there any possibility that we can put this in an account that's guarded or accountable in some fashion?
Pani and I already spoke about this generally with respect to the escrows, and I think this would be money that would go into a separate Park and Rec Fund escrow account because it does have to be accounted separately as it comes in.
Okay. What do we do then? We already have a Park and Rec Fund?
We do have a Park and Rec Fund, but are, are you saying you need a separate Park and Rec?
Well, no, we would put it in the Park and Rec Fund. Okay. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that one passes four zero as well.
Yes, for clarification, is the agreement that you just passed is that this money comes in the Park and Rec?
So, no, the approval back from 2003 required a $1,500 submission to the Park and Rec Fund at the time of, yeah, per lot at the time of building permit. So that's just...
Manchester Farms?
Yeah, just a quick update on Manchester Farms. We've received the forms of the deeds of dedication for the roads in it, as well as the store owner management aspects of it. And the last item we need before the township can act on it is the as-built plans. And so we will, we're still awaiting those from Iron Oak. There's no action to be taken from the board tonight.
Okay, once, okay, so this motion...
Potentially at the March meeting, depending on when they submit the as-built plans.
Okay. I have a question or just comment as it relates to this. Has anybody heard from Eric Schrock lately? From Iron Oak, hell, I'll see. Okay, because I, one of the contractors who did work in Manchester Farms in October reached out to me because he still hasn't been paid for a relatively small invoice, it was like $750 bucks. But he said he's emailed him like over 100 times with no response. So I was just curious. I mean, I know we have no jurisdiction to make Iron Oak pay their contractors, but this was an issue before with Eric, that he was working for Billy. Did you give me his contact information, Pani? I will reach out to him just as a courtesy to see if he is responsive anyways. Thanks, Pani.
I can wait till Steve comes back for the next... The next item in terms of legal issues to report, Mr. from the Planning Commission submitted a series of requests related to the PC, wanted to be updated on certain matters and wanting representation at their various meetings. And what I would suggest would be, I would think it might be helpful for like a meeting between the township engineer, myself, and the planning commission. I'd expect the board would want a cap on that, one or two hours, to make sure it's contained. To go through all the issues they raised, because he does raise some issues and there are potential solutions to them in terms of stale applications, how applications are processed and kind of updates on plans once they're approved by the board as they go forward. So that's something really for the board to consider.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. We do spend some time with them, but that would help you guys out in moving forward with some of this stuff, that's fine. I mean, putting a cap on it is fine, if we feel that's enough. I mean, I guess if we reach that cap and you feel there's still more, then we can readdress it at that point. I don't know what you guys feel or what you think the cap should be if we go that way. Mike, you should just be well aware, I mean, in the financial statement, it's never been tracked before, but you're being tracked in comparison to the former solicitor in a bar graph chart and also a list chart here. So obviously, if you start to do that, whoever's doing this nice bar graph and chart is going to be racking up the numbers to present one time the legal analysis against you versus a former law firm.
Separate thing, just like escrows go under their own separate thing.
This chart's never been held before, so your, it has Land Macarion on here and has you, so it's a comparison chart, legal fees versus the previous fees. So by agreeing to go forward, you probably will be analyzed by the end of the year for your fees being increased. Just letting you know.
That's why we're bringing to the board's attention, you know, you guys hold the purse strings and you're the ones who decide how you want to allocate your resources and your legal resources.
Sure. Any other opinions on planning commission having a couple hours of this time? I'd rather hold off to the next meeting to make this, this call because there probably, there might be a change probably in this area. The changes in the board, so I'll, I'm willing to hold off to the next meeting to see what happens with the board and some possibilities. So I can make a decision by the next meeting. All right, so we'll table that until the next meeting.
The next item for your consideration is the minor amendment to the Emergency Communications Booster Ordinance Amendment. It's an ordinance that the county has asked each municipality to adopt. More recently, though, they've, they've come forward with some minor tweaks to it, really just addressing the scope of how, the scope or the reach of their county emergency radio facilities within a, within a structure. Before it was 90%, it has to be adequate coverage, now it's 95%.
Is that the only change, really?
The only other change is a change in the decibel level of the, or the frequency level of the radio stuff at the county. So you're not being asked to approve that tonight, it would just be authorizing that ordinance amendment for consideration in your marketing.
Okay, I see. Okay, I'll make a motion to advertise a public hearing for the East File Field Emergency Communications Booster Ordinance. Second, questions or comments? Mrs. Scott?
What is that?
So, so the county's got its, it's a new kind of communication system so they can communicate with all the emergency responders. And it requires, the ordinance that is in place requires that if you're building a new building, it's got to receive a certain amount of coverage from that system. And if it doesn't, you've got to put a booster in to make sure that there's adequate coverage in your facility. So that's already in place, they're just changing the percentages of your facility that has to be, get adequate coverage. So before it was 90%, now the county's asked it to be put to 95%.
You're talking about an individual home?
No, it doesn't, I think it mostly covers non-residential facilities and businesses.
Oh, okay.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Comcast Cable Franchise Agreement update?
We've got some good revisions back from Comcast. We'll be able to be in a position to present it, I think, present the formalized agreement to the board at your March meeting. Generally, it's looking positive. We would maintain the franchise fee rate at 5%. Maintain the trunk extensions which, in which Comcast is required to provide people service without charging them extra. If you live far off the road, if you live, you know, 1,000 feet off the road and you want Comcast cable, they're going to charge you to draw, you know, run the line. Under our old agreement, under our agreement with Verizon, and now under this new agreement, our, our level will be maintained at 150 feet, which is consistent with the character of our area and is actually bigger, you know, a longer distance than some of our other municipalities that see these agreements come through. So that's a benefit to the township because, and the residents, because if you live 140 feet away from the road, Comcast can't, can't charge you for running the additional line to your house.
Okay. Agricultural Cultural Security Commission, Mr. Kilgore was on this, and since he stepped down, it's our understanding that a member of the board has to be on this commission, is that correct?
I don't think it's a requirement of a member of the board, I think the board would typically want to have some representation on it because it does affect your...
I thought it was, I thought it was the one commission where we did have to have a board member on there.
There's no requirement under the Ag Area Security Law to do that, maybe the township practices it on that.
Because we've always, I think we've always had supervisor on there. Okay, either way.
Well, if, if there's not a requirement for that, then...
See if somebody...
Well, if Mr. Kilgore still wants to be on it.
He doesn't.
He doesn't?
He doesn't?
Then we do, that was going to be my next question.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we see if another resident would like to do it?
There is a benefit to having a board member on it because the, any decisions that the Ag Security Area Commission makes are going to come before you to make, and usually there's kind of a quick turnaround, so it's, it's good to have your finger on the pulse of what's potentially going in.
So anything they do has to come before us anyway?
Yep.
I don't recall ever...
I don't think we've ever seen any of that.
Might not have seen it.
They're pretty infrequent.
Not in two years.
I don't think we've had any.
Briefly, buddy, yeah.
I was just thinking, for the Solicitor information also, usually before the agriculture, basically never had a meeting, right? I'm going to tell you that right now, ever since it was organized, Dr. Ayton's on it, he owns a farm down there, a pond. And there's, usually the people who are on it own the farm, Garth Minehand was on it at one time. It was, you know, people that had a farm, then usually it was one person that, you know, a resident that had two acres or one acre was on there. Lately, there have been one supervisor on it because Mr. Kilgore also owned a farm, you know, so basically that's the reason why he's on there. But basically, that's something else that you have a new supervisor coming on. Maybe he had an interest in being a Glen Rose, but there's still some farm land out there, maybe. I'm not making this suggestion, I would, you know, I would just say that certain committee has not ever met, right?
When I was on it, we met, we met for one meeting. We had to make a determination...
Of course, you had to have a chairman and something.
We had to make a determination if someone else could be admitted to the Ag Security, if another property was asking for permission to be admitted. So we had one meeting on that. We had, no, I don't mind, sure, so, Carol. I guess, does it have to be told right now? Okay, so maybe we can put out there feelers for interest for anybody and see who's on it now, if any of them want to be the chairs, because this is really, you're going to be the chair, chairman on it, because Chuck was the, was the chair as well. So if there's somebody that wants to step up that's already on it for the chair...
He was the chair because he was on the board, not because he was on the committee.
Yeah, he was on the committee, he was on the committee.
And why don't you state?
I was the chair now.
You were the chairman of the, your board, you're not on the committee.
Who's on the committee now?
I have that list in front of me, so...
You would have to...
I have that list.
We have the list.
I know. But one person, I can just tell you, Mr. Chairman, lived in the township, but actually he was on the committee, then he lived in West Marlboro. All right, so that's something that you have to check out with anybody that wants to be that position, that they are a resident of the township.
One was Monahan, others, Delio.
But I'll mention the gentleman's name.
Well, no, it's a committee, we can discuss, it's a, it's a committee, just going through the names, what's the other, who was it?
Charles Kilgore.
Uh, no, there was Delio, Monahan...
Monahan and, um...
And Dr. Ayton.
Yeah.
William Milkins.
Yeah. Okay, we just hold off for the next one on this one, everybody?
Sure.
See if we get some interest.
Want me to ask the other?
Yeah, if any of them wanted to be the chairman, if not, then we'll see what else is there. Okay. Police Department, January Police Report is in the back for Resident Review. Public Works, the Road Department, monthly reports are in the back as well. We have the weeds, ink contract approval. This is different than the one we did last year, right, Todd? Because it's got the park option on it too. So is this to do all three programs, is what we're looking to do? What's the pricing like compared to last year, you remember?
Pretty much been the same for a long time.
It looks, it looks the same. Any concerns with the work they've done with any of these programs? Have they made beneficial for us? I make a mo, I make a motion to approve the pricing set forth by Weeds Incorporated Spray for 2016. Second, questions or comments?
I guess there have been concerns about the chemicals of the spraying.
Remember, they put, somewhat, but the chemicals that they use, it's not one of them.
Good. And I think the Road Department would know, there's some residents said that they didn't want that sprayed on their property. And I'll just say that some of the people in back of me, you know, basically the King Ranch area, they didn't want that item sprayed. So if that's the case, I know, once you hire somebody to do the weed, they should be able to go along all township roads and stuff. But I realize, bloody roads owns a certain property, but nobody should be able to climb it. But the stuff is legal as far as spraying it, that's the reason why we spray it, to keep the weeds and stuff in there. I just want to bring that up because I happen to know, Tag knows as well, like, some people refused and came out and told them they don't want to spray it.
They're probably spraying someone Monsanto product that's definitely going into our water tables and...
I don't want to...
Mrs. Scott?
I would tell, I, I don't want the spray. It all washes down into the stream in some way and into the water table. Right, I agree, Ed, definitely I agree with that one point. First time tonight, I agree with you. I don't want any Monsanto products next to me at all. I don't want to breathe them, I don't want to drink them. So I, I object. I remember one time I seen South Coastal did advertise that, you know, they were going to spray, and they had a number to call. So I called it, but I never got a response. I, I don't want that sprayed in the township. It's bad. It, Monsanto also, what do we have now, modified plant product? Hello? No, I, I don't, I don't see the necessity for it at all.
Well, Mrs. Scott, at least you're aware, the majority aren't, and that's the fate. So just be proactive for your own self, and that's all you can do as well.
Proactive, well, hello? You know, so you speak up and you say, hey, I don't want poison. And so because everybody else doesn't know you're doing it, and they're not here to speak, that you're going to go ahead with it? I object 100%. And I wish the minute to reflect that. And I really wish your agenda would be on the website with a little more detail that says, that exactly says what you're going to do. You're going to spray with whatever it is. So in order for you not to spray Hepsa Hill Road, then I, so that it doesn't wash down into Dennis Run, into the Brandywine Creek, that goes down to the Chesapeake, then what should, what can I do?
It hasn't passed yet, so we have to see if it passes.
Well, please don't pass it, thank you.
Any other questions or comments, sir?
Yes, my name is Nelson Walder, though, Maple Lane, doing, I have a discount rate. I have a row of dead pine trees out front from whatever you sprayed, I'd like to see it posted once you got spray, what you're spraying this time. They've, they've been 20, 30 feet tall, and once you guys spray, they're all dying. They're on the back, they're all alive. So you're spraying something, I don't like it. Okay, so that stuff should be posted.
Do we have a list of what it is, Tag, or can we get a list?
Yeah, he gets, he'll give you a printout of everything, but them, period, you're talking, I don't think they ever sprayed anything.
Somebody sprayed something on it.
It wasn't, wasn't weeds or corporate, that's just called grass up there.
They sprayed, they sprayed that plant modifier tag.
It shouldn't kill them.
It better, yeah, it shouldn't, but they sprayed the plant modifier.
Well, can we get a list of, of that? I mean, is there a deadline on approving this? I mean, it's winter, so they're not doing it then.
Don't matter, you can cancel it all, but, yeah, just, you know, you know.
Do you spray every single township road, both sides?
No.
How far up?
It's just, it's just the guardrails and some of the banks, it's not all.
Do they do them in the developments?
No.
Maybe you should have a list of the area that they spray.
We have a list, we have a list of all the roads and all the guardrails that they do and all the banks, that's why I said I can't believe they do it.
And when it doesn't happen, Tag's spending countless hours mowing and weed whacking, and we're going to complain about his labor hours are too high, so some areas have to be sprayed.
No, I would not complain about weed whacking. And I object.
Well, can we, I guess table it until next month and get the...
You know what, just take it off, we'll just weed whack it, don't worry about it. That's what we can see. Let's try, let's try without a year, and we'll put, and we'll take it from there. That's all.
On the Ford Field, what do the weeds, I mean, what's the concern with the weeds, Tag?
Well, the weeds, we tried, you know, like all the guardrails.
Like what, this whole, what weeds are you...
Weeds grow, grow up, long guardrails, and then we have to...
Like what, this whole, like what weed are you attacking?
What's that?
What weeds are we attacking, like, are you...
Long guardrails, it kills everything, it kills, it kills everything, it does, you know. Lawn brothers, just pain to that, you know. We have a lot of guardrails in the township, and that's why we do it. It's been going on since 2004. I mean, it's the same prices, you know, and, and I think Paula Coin was the one that actually started this back in the early 2003, 2004. She's the one that actually, actually got it going, because, you know, these guys are professionals, and, you know, we can't, we can't build because we don't have spraying.
Someone was just recently complaining last year about the same company in the park, you know, because you're, you know...
I don't have a problem with it. We can leave it go for a year and just see how it goes, that's all. I don't have a problem with it.
Pay it with to the next meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to at least table it until the next meeting, if we can get a list of where they do it and what they use.
Yeah, they're guys, they're guys, they don't, they don't have a...
Take them around that, then we can, you know, everybody can have that.
Give you a whole list of stuff.
All right, and if you can get that, and then we can take them on to the next one and see where we're at. So I rescind my motion.
Real quick, on under roads, tag the air compressor.
Oh, we have, we have it here too, for a salt contract, you guys have it in front of you, so you can see it. It's going to have designs, so I can...
A salt contract?
Yeah, it's a salt contract for 2016, 2017.
I don't have that. Can we get that after the meeting then, I guess?
Well, that's, we have to have...
We have a deadline to lock in.
Line the 15th, the next month.
15th, the next month, okay. What is it for again?
It's just a salt contract that we sign every year.
Mr. CoStar, so it's CoStar.
Oh, for, okay.
What you do is you lock in your price per ton of salt, uh, the CoStars.
Right. All I really need is, is, okay, you guys go ahead and build.
Do we need a motion on that?
You need a motion on that.
To approve the 2016 CoStars.
Okay.
Fuel allocation contract, correct?
Yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the 2016 CoStars fuel allocation contract. Second, questions or comments?
Is that, can I ask, through the chairman, is that through the county? Because I know one year we had, pardon?
State.
Okay, because we, one year we did it with the county too, all right, that's what I'm asking. Because it's, it's better by a group of people, get a better rate.
Yeah, through CoStars, which is the state.
All right, because one year the county, all the townships went together, that's all.
The benefit of it is we don't have to go out to bid for it.
Yeah, right, it's better to bid as a group.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, the only other thing I have is, is...
You got a motion and...
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
What else did you have, Tag?
Uh, we have an air compressor out here, it's pretty antique. I think it's like a 30, 30 gallon tank, and it's just not capable of doing what we're doing out there now. We're changing our back brakes and all that in the trucks now, and we go to try to turn the air wrench, and it just won't, won't turn, it's just too small, the compressor. We're, we're now, the last two weeks, we put, do the back brakes on two of the trucks out there, and something we haven't done in the past, you know, we're trying to save money. So this compressor that we have out there is just not, and it's antique and it's old. So I got a compressor from Tractor Supply, it was worth $1,099. And associated parts, they want 1579 for a same compressor, so. It's just something that we need out there.
What size would this one be?
Uh, this one here, this one here is an 80 gallon tank, five horsepower. Something that, you know, we just definitely need out there. We can't even use the air wrench, we have flat tire on one of the trucks out there, and we couldn't even take an air wrench to take it off, but we didn't, you know, we don't have a press.
Yeah, fine with that, it falls under maintenance, right?
Yeah, we can take it out, we have, we have the small...
Right, I'm fine with that. Alright, thank you for that, that's a motion. Okay, uh, the fire departments with Westone and Modena have their, um, reports for the fire EMS in the back, I don't know, uh, Mr. Slade, do you want to speak to anything?
I have nothing.
Nothing?
Status quo.
What's the banquet?
Uh, it's good for, uh, show, uh, April sixteenth, Saturday the sixteenth of April, we are, right, no banquet, love for all the, uh...